All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 8th. This is the question we were planning commissions. If y'all wouldn't mind standing, repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Go ahead and let the record indicate that we have all planning commission members in attendance here with us today. And we are grateful to welcome the county commissioners here with us as well for this meeting and this work session. First item on our agenda is gonna be our minutes from our July 9th meeting. Anybody got any questions or concerns from July 9th?
I love how these are organized, so thank you, these are very easy to review.
Oh, thank you.
I just noticed that my vote wasn't in the motions, so I voted no on the first motion and yes on the second.
I thought this was the meeting where you and judge were not allowed to vote.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah.
Well, I remember I was like, if I could vote, I'd vote. See? I think you're... Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a lot... You weren't officially back on with us yet.
Right, I was just very vocally obnoxious.
All right, any other comments on the minutes? If not, I'll take a motion on those minutes. Motion. A motion we've got second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are passed. Next item's gonna be public comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. We're all here for tonight's agenda. All right. Seeing none, remarks from planning commissioners? Record over. Liam? Good to see ya.
Good to be here.
All right, then we're gonna adjourn to our work session and I'm gonna turn the time over to Charlie.
Commissioner, thanks for joining the planning commission tonight. As you guys know, we've got a work session to discuss a potential general plan amendment. I'm not sure. All right, the property gets seen in the red boundaries on the screen. West of 4700, north of 12th Street, and with the river on the west side. Not all the property is on by that area, but after some discussions with both the planning commission and the county commission, it might be appropriate just to take a cursory look at everything else that's there and just make sure that whatever the general plan shows is well planned as it relates to other properties as well. So with that in mind, we'll do a little bit of presentation from the applicant and then it'll just be question and answer until you guys are done talking.
Yeah, so I'm Jeff Beck of Black Pine. You have a blaster, she's with Black Pine as well. Yeah, we really appreciate your time tonight. Hopefully we're not using that. We're really grateful for your input and for helping us with the process. So I just probably need the groundwork for how we got here. I'm an old community that are here as well. So I've been looking for a project like this for a long time. And the hardest part doing a project like this is municipalities typically don't have the codes that allows this. And the type of development I'm talking about is a traditional neighborhood development. It's building towns and cities like we used to, which was around human beings and not around vehicles. After World War II, when there was just kind of the spread to the suburbs, our development patterns changed. We separated zones, you had a residential zone, an office zone, industrial zone. It really split and separated where people live and where they work and where they live. And the traditional neighborhood development pattern had all of those things together. And there's reasons why they separated it back in the day, but I think there is a big demand, and we've seen that in a market study that we had done, of people wanting to live in a place where they can walk to the grocery store, walk to a restaurant, or get onto trails, and not have to drive for all of these things. That's kinda happened back then. We were counting past a general plan and a code that really promotes this type of development, which is centered around humans, and it's also centered around community neighborhoods. And so when we saw what they wanted to do, and one of the things the county, and I commend you guys, it's, you know, I've talked to landowners around the proposed development site. And a common theme is, don't touch our open space, don't touch our farms. And I'm actually sympathetic to that, because you go out there and it's beautiful. It's been that way for generations. I think the thing that I feel, you know, I don't feel good about getting red farming and agricultural land, but growth is coming and it's gonna come. It is going to come. And so the question is, what type of growth do we want to see in a place like this that's so beautiful? And I think the county has articulated, they want smart growth. They want growth that has complete neighborhood. And so anyway, that's why we're excited about this plan. You guys are familiar with kind of the process that we're taking on this. We've hired a design firm from back east that spent 35 years creating these type of communities. We've visited a lot of them, they're incredible. They're the type of communities that you can live or can play in. They're the type of communities that young families can live in and well-established families can live in and old families can live in. It's a complete neighborhood. We engaged a consultant who studies, does market studies on these type of developments. And the market study is really unique because it says, it doesn't do a supply and demand feasibility study like a typical market study. It says, this is what's happening in the world right now. And after the Great Recession, household migration has changed completely. People are, the young families are not wanting to, they want an opportunity to live in a neighborhood where they can live and work in. Older folks are wanting to sell their big houses and all the things that come along with that and move somewhere that they can just have a house that they take care of, that the HOA takes care of. So that what they're finding is the demand for this type of neighborhood is very large. And what they do is they look at the area specifically, we were counting, and what they identified is 40% of the households that are looking to move want a project like this, as opposed to a conventional suburban project. So we felt comfortable after we saw the market demand, and then we hired this firm to do a design on this property, and we'll go through that later. And if there's any questions as we go through, obviously, you're welcome. Tell me what you think. Okay, so this is the subject property in red. The first thing the designers do is they zoom in this. Everything's about a five-minute walk from a, they have a quarter acre or quarter mile radius. And they say that you need to be able to walk. It's a five-minute walk from the edge of the circle to the center. And the center is typically a commercial center or something of interest, maybe it's an natureway pool. But basically, where you live, you need to be able to have a five-minute walk to some, a place of interest. And that walk needs to be protected, secure, beautiful. So they first start by laying out these circles, and then that informs the type of development that they wanna do. This is the plan that they've come up with. Now, I just wanna say, this is not the final plan. This is a iteration, and there's gonna be a lot more iterations of this plan. But I'll zoom in a little bit, so you can see the type of thing we're talking about with these circles. So at the middle, there's a commercial center. And the light color blocks are residential. And then you go to another one, it's the same thing. Towards the north, it becomes more, less dense, but it still has a point of interest for the community. And then down on the 12th Street, it's a little more dense where it has vehicle-oriented commercial. One thing that they've established, the designers, is you see this, they basically created a main street that goes from 12th Street up and curves around into Fourth South. And so the idea is that would be, in certain areas, would be the main drag of the community, and it would function like a main street, like your general plan was wanting. This is the plan without those. Happy to zoom in or talk about anything again. This isn't the area of plans, this is not the final plan. There's a lot of changes still. One of the things the market study pointed out is, an area where this location scored very low was in schools that were available. So we're proposing to have a school in this development. We're also very interested in preserving agricultural areas, so we propose one up here in this corner.
Jeff, did you see the room?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Do you want me to repeat anything I just said? Okay. You'll guess? Okay. Well, guess for the best, not for the worst. As you can see as well, there's a lot of open space. So Charlie, in some of the meetings we've had, he's always said, you know, per 1,000 residents, we need 10 acres of open space. This surpasses that by a long shot. And what makes interesting places for people is open space. And one of the other things I mentioned with Charlie and talking about this is, our interests are aligned. The thing that these communities create better than anything else that I've seen is community. And we're not trying to create a community just for the community's sake. We're trying to create a community for the entire communities. That means we want people that aren't living here to also come and enjoy the beauty of what this thing is gonna be. So one thing that we have to do is we have to amend the general plan. And so this map represents the plan I just showed you in the colors that the county has. So that red corridor is the main street, you know, that road that goes up is kind of the main street. And then around that is gonna be residential that supports that. Again, it's your own way. Same thing becomes a little more, and I don't even wanna say rural, because you guys will all laugh at me, because you do live in rural now, and this is not that rural, but less dense up here. And again, as this plan shakes out, these things will change, but this is what we're at today. The county commissioners, I think the planning commission as well, has asked, you know, if you could take 4700, 12th Street to the river and make a cohesive plan, what would it look like from a color standpoint? And so I think, you know, from the members of the public that are here, I'm not proposing anything on your property, I'm just, this is what the county has us to propose. So, you know, you can give input on that. But this is the count, this is the map, the general plan amendment map, as though everything was part of that. So again, you have that main street core. It kicks off to the north a little bit, but mostly everything is gonna be residential that supports that core. And we're even gonna propose in that core to have single-family homes. And one of the things that these communities do exceptionally well is you will never be able to tell the difference between a single-family home and a town home and a live-work unit. I mean, they cohesively work together. For those of you that visit Norton Commons, it's like... And then on 4700 and 12th, it'd be more vehicle-oriented, commercial. And one of the things that I'll point out is, I think one of the things that the county plan right now does really well is it identifies these village nodes. But one of the concerns we have is if you do a village node on 12th Street or on 4700, those are pretty busy roads, and they're projected to be even busier. So to create an actual village center where people wanna stay and walk around, you have to get it off those main roads. And that's what we're proposing here. That doesn't mean you can't have intense commercial or vehicle-oriented commercial on those roads, but we're proposing a pedestrian experience that's more interior.
Can I, or Jeff, can you bring up what the general plan shows now versus what this is? I'm asking you to bring up the county. If you wanna go through the rest of the presentation, then let Charlie bring you back. Yeah, we could do that. Charlie, if it's big house, we can do that after.
So one thing, one thing that they found that we've been asked in the workshops that we had when we were designing the plan was show a, show how the transportation plan works with this property. So we've laid out, this is the existing, the main kind of corridor, collector streets in blue. That's what the county has on the maps right now. One of the things that you, you know, we got feedback on was, we want to make sure that this project matches the streets that you are showing on the town map. We're proposing to change these streets slightly. One big one is this river crossing here kinda goes to nowhere. And if you wanna continue that, it's gonna go again through the river. So we're gonna shoot it off further north.
And that's not actually where the plan shows. It is...
Oh, it is?
You guys showing it, yeah, it doesn't go.
So we're making it look worse than it really is. Sorry. This is what we're proposing, the two river crossings being. On the east, these roads will match the county plan, but we're proposing to, that they change slightly. One of the things that's in the county's plan talks about the Emerald Necklace. And one of the things that we're really interested in is the river. It's a huge amenity for the community and for this project. And it's obviously something that the county really wants to preserve as a corridor for the community. The community's not being able to join this part of the river, private land. And so one of the things that the county's gonna require is that we provide that corridor. We talked about this in the commissioner meeting, both commission meetings, the planning commission and county commission, which is, we want, right now you have a standard that says a 300-foot setback from the river. And what we're proposing is that it varies in depth, from 100 feet up to 320 feet in certain areas. And we feel like that'll make it a more interesting experience for those that are participating in it. And as you know, we'll propose trails along that will benefit the community as well as open space and parks. Here's some examples. They refer to the, you guys saw this in the work sessions, the Emerald Necklace in Boston. As you can see on the right, the Emerald Necklace is not as consistent, you know, width the whole way around. It kinda ebbs and flows based on its geography and what they think is interesting.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Just the concern, are you going to do extra embankment? And I'm sure, so you'll vary the distance for your, make sure your flooding is taken care of.
Yeah, we care a lot about the flooding and, you know, the cost of engineering and whatever that has to happen, we'll mitigate that.
Okay.
I don't pretend to know what that river's like, and everyone in this room, you know, probably chuckles to think that we can do a development around there, but I think the idea is the engineers will tell us what we need to do to make sure. And obviously, enough knowledge of the community would be very helpful. But again, I think the point of this is hopefully the interests are aligned, this is community space, and that the community can enjoy that river in a safe and beautiful way. This on the bottom right is an image in Norton Commons, which is community space along Waterway. Again, we envision this type of thing that the community can benefit from.
We're in a meeting, so we'll take, maybe take comments later, but the work sessions for us, so sorry. We need to bring it up in the public hearing or as we go through, but right now...
The, so this is, again, I don't know where it's gonna be. We're proposing a certain area, but we'd love to have, I mean, one of the things that is really important, and again, I feel funny even saying this, because I'm in a room full of farmers that have done this their whole life. But I think we really want to pay homage and respect to what this plan has been. And so finding a corner of the property, you know, in the long term to dedicate to kind of respecting that heritage is really important to us. So we'll incorporate that somewhere. Here's some images of the actual plan. They had an artist come in and render as they were designing it. This is looking towards Ben Lumen on the slough. This would be a typical section, a residential section. Here's what we anticipate the main street looking like. We're very, very interested in traditional architecture. That helps make a place of, that's the type of architecture we'll require. This would be a typical residential street section.
Can I ask a question about your residential street section? So I talked about having rear loaded as far as garages go. Is there still the ability to drive on those streets in front of the homes so that you can access, they'll get access from the front and people with their access from the back?
And there will be parallel parking on those streets as well.
Okay, awesome.
This is a drawing of the north section. Again, a little less, a little more open. This is a rendering of how it would look coming up with 12th Street.
They approve it and there aren't the nodas on it.
And then the, kind of the last parts are just street sections that they're proposing. I don't know if you guys wanna see those. Again, they're not finalized, but I think it's kinda a picture for the type of street section. So I think Charlie, is that yours on the right?
Yeah, that's the county cross section.
And they should have added a tractor in ours, but this is the current proposed street section on the collector, right?
Yeah, that's a collector 80-foot wide.
80-foot wide, this would be our proposal on an 80-foot wide collector. Again, kinda protecting more the pedestrian experience as well as a shared use path.
Shared use path. Where they have the rivers, sorry, where the river is situated, the collectors that span this project, they're not gonna be the same kind of collectors that we see in other parts of the county, except for maybe the ones that cross the river. So 12th Street, 400 North 7, or 400 South 7, they're going post kind of future river crossings. But as it relates to this community going north-south, unless it crosses the river, I don't see it being needing to have really wide lanes like we would normally see on some of these other streets.
And I think the biggest thing about the street widths in the section is, obviously, we live in a very vehicle-dominated society. We need cars. We're not gonna pretend like we don't need cars. The point is, is we're not going to, we're not going to make this a car place. This is gonna be a place for people, and so we want narrow streets so that people go slower. So it makes it safer for kids and for families and for people. Here's another section. Typical section is called the Yield Street. Again, it's, you're not gonna go cranking down the street, because it's just not that nice to go in your car. This is, this is probably more a typical street, where you have a parallel park on the other side. Your question about, you know, colored building right in front of the houses, this is sort of what it'll look like, I think. And then this is, this is the kind of the main street, typical section, wider sidewalks. And then this is, this is the alleyway. So all cars will, all garages will be on the rear of homes and will be accessed by an alley. One of the things the market study showed, and this is obvious for those of us that... There will be, most people in this community like trucks or boats, and so they will be accommodating those in the sections. So whether or not this accommodates it or not, I'm not sure, but that's something that we're gonna take into consideration. And the designer said, you know, we designed these for F-150s. I don't know about the 350 long beds, but trucks will be able to pull in. Anyway, that's the presentation, happy to answer any questions. Go back to your slides. Get feedback.
Let's go up to the slide with your proposal to the general plan and to Commissioner Ferberro's question. I'm Charlie, swing in the rendering of what the current general plan shows.
So take a few looks, memorize it, see it in your mind's eye when I pull this one up. And I'm glad this chairman, that he asked to bring this one up, because all the other stuff that you saw, the other attractive parts of this community were unattractive, depending on your opinion. Those details are still yet to be worked out. The only thing that we're gonna talk about right now, at present and in your next public hearing, is whether or not the general plan should be changed. We'll be working on a reason with the applicant in tandem, but my recommendation to them is that they go to both the planning commission and the county commission to at least get a nod, to add to potentially even a final approval of a general plan amendment before they go too far into the details on the rest of the plan. But I did wanna make sure they showed you what it is that they're trying to get. And these pictures, I'm actually grateful that the sketch drawings didn't have a lot of color on them, because a lot of times you get a developer who comes in and says, here's a pretty picture, and then you go out there 20 years later and it doesn't look anything like that. I mean, where are all the trees or whatever else makes it beautiful? I did have the opportunity earlier this summer to visit Norton Commons, which is the development that the project team put together. And then it does, it looks better than those sketches do. Those sketches are great artistry rendering, but it looks pretty credible from my perspective, from a development perspective. That's what, see, hang on one second, let Paul set up. Please do not just a little bit there, you should see the northern portion of this. I think this is still on my screen.
Oh, sorry.
Oh. At least it was mine. I don't know, it's a... So you can see from the general plan we had here, and sorry, the screen up there's lagged behind mine a little bit, but what I would see here is that kind of lighter green color, green denoting future agricultural uses. Those white dashed lines are intended to be collector streets. And just to be clear on what a collector street is, a collector street is a street that connects a residential street to a material street, basically. So collectors aren't intended to be huge, they're intended to be 4700 or 12th Street. They're just intended to convey people to a place to do it. 400 South right now is a very narrow version of a collector street. You see along the, along 1150, you've got vehicle-oriented commercial up until you see about the 5 and 1150. And then west of that, it's mixed residential. The plan says mixed residential is basically market demand residential to the family, duplexes, triplexes, multi-family. What is the market asking for? And gives planning commissioners and county commissioners, you guys hold control through the reason process on what it is you're pulling. So you don't have to approve high-density apartments, you know, for example, just because it says mixed residential. Which is another thing I'm really glad that this applicant is not proposing, is like the apartment complexes, because we could potentially see that in some of these proposals in the future from other applicants. And then you see on 4700 west and 12th Street, that's kind of your potential village node in that area. The idea is that 900 south, the road with the school on it, that one would be kind of more your, either your main or your center. And then 4700 would be, you know, the cross street for your future city at some point when a city potentially builds out in this area. With this, as developed here, as the design team was putting it together, I asked them to make mine's life a little easier and just make sure the streets are connecting and lining up where we are showing on our plan. As far as their development goes, plugging into the rest of the planned streets in the area. And they've done pretty well, thank you. Any questions about that map?
So we had a proposed development on 900 south and 4700, on both sides of 4700, and a little bit further north on that...
where, but, but specifically on 4709, so the northeast part of the intersection. We had had an applicant that asked for form base in that area. So we have, we have seen this before in this area and it applies to the general plan. So just so that everybody understands that, can you, can you articulate through form base a little bit for everybody that's here?
Actually, let me, let me pull the form base, Matt. So general plan, Matt, general plan, just to make sure everyone's plugging up the system in together. The general plan informs policy decisions. One policy decision that's already been made based on the general plan is the street regulating plan for the future form base zone in the area. And what that means, sorry, I can't move my fingers at the same time. It's kind of harder than I thought. What that means is, um, if a landlord in that particular area where these colored streets are showing here, if they want to develop their property and they want to go straight to the form base zone, number one, they have to get the rezon. So there is no entitlement. They come and ask, and if you guys like where it is that they're proposing, maybe you give them the rezon. But this tells us that once they get the form base zone, this is the layout of the, the street configuration in that area. Now, this is the layout that planning office put together. This is not the layout that any individual landowner or developer has proposed. And so as we were looking at it, thinking, what is the best case scenario for the future? We tried to kind of adjust things based on property boundaries. So, uh, most landowners, if not all landowners within, within that area have an opportunity to take advantage of both sides, either side of the, uh, of one of these future streets. But that doesn't mean that we have to have a perfect grid network in the area. In fact, in the form based zone, properties that are, are, are zoned for base, one of these roads move within plus or minus a couple hundred feet. So it gives them a lot of opportunity to move it. The only thing you can't do, what the code says is, you can't move it a couple hundred feet onto somebody else's property. Right? And if you're proposing it, don't push it onto your neighbors, uh, and then build a big, you know, building that tries to get access off of it when the neighbors are ready to develop it. So we actually, we also asked the applicant to take this street network into consideration as they were looking at their streets so that we could see that plug in as well. In some kind of a, a reasonable way. As you look at the colors, the, the pink colors, magenta or whatever that color is down the bottom, that's a vehicle oriented commercial spaces. And then the, uh, the red, the is mixed use commercial, mixed use commercial is ground level commercial with some residential above or behind. And then the, uh, the darker orange is multifamily residential. The lighter orange is single family or sorry, excuse me, small lot residential, which you know, get like a fourplex on. And then once you get up from there, you just get bigger, bigger single family lot sizes as it expands out. We did start having a conversation with the developer about using the form based zone on the property. After I went and looked at Norton Commons and saw some of the, uh, the way that that project was governed, began to realize that form based zone, it'll work fine there, but I don't think it's going to give the developer the latitude to respond to what the market wants. I think it basically says, this is, this is the box for you to work inside of for form base. Form base is more for those neighborhoods that already have a lot of parcels that have already been parcelized out and where neighbors don't necessarily, uh, always have the same vision or dream or whatever. So they're not always matching up. You get kind of hodgepodge development patterns. Form base is to make sure that as those landlords develop, you get some consistency. When you get a master plan development like this, you don't necessarily need that because the developer has a market motivation to provide us some consistency. You're not going to, you're not going to sell things for quite as much if it's just an, an inconsistent, an inconsistent project. The other thing I really liked about Norton Commons that our form based zone doesn't do is it gives the developer full control through real estate purchase contracts on what happens on any given parcel the developer creates. So let's say you've got your downtown village area. Right now, our downtown village area, if, if we're using that mixed use for the evil oriented, we don't allow single family dwellings. If, if you're zoned for base, we wouldn't allow a single family dwelling there. Reason for that is because, um, right now, the single family will sell really fast and occupy all that commercial space. And once you have a single family, once you have a dwelling unit built, I, it could be a hundred years before it gets replaced with something else. So we didn't want single family to cannibalize the opportunity for a village to be created here. The other side of that is single family uses, a, a single family detached uses a lot of land. And when you're looking at your market, um, composition, when it comes to successful commercial areas, every market analysis, but most market analysis is analyses that I've seen. You, you take circles of certain radius, um, and you put your store or whatever it is at center of that and find out who your customer shed is and where they're coming from, who your competition is, et cetera. And if you don't have enough rooftops in that circle, you don't hit that grocery store and you don't get that, that commercial use, for example. So it's all primarily rooftop motivated. And if you have a bunch of single family, West Haven is a good example. There's a spot reserved for Walmart and I believe Walmart still owns it. And I was talking to the West Haven mayor last year or so, and he just couldn't figure out why Walmart didn't want to go there. It's because it's zoned for single family, don't have enough rooftops. And within proximity to that Walmart, so Walmart can't open. The, the community can't capitalize on that retail tax base. So having this project where the developer on the other hand can say, you know what, a house actually works here. Because it's, you got a dental office here, you got a house here, a single family or a detached or attached. Maybe you got a little, um, ice cream shop over here. When this person buys this house, you got an ice cream shop and a dentist over here, they know that they're buying it with an ice cream shop and a dentist office over here. But the developer also has the ability to say, they got to look similar. And so as someone's walking down that sidewalk, past the dental office, going to get some gelato. We might have got gelato when we were in Norton Commons. You pass that, um, single family dwelling and it fits in just fine. You don't, you don't see any difference there. One of the biggest things, and I think I've told you guys this before, uh, one of the biggest things I think we do from a government perspective, at least what we're supposed to do is help manage expectations. Above, above all else, it's, we're in the business of managing expectations. So when expectations go unfulfilled or unmet, both from the perspective of the public as well as from the private landlord, that's when we get in trouble with controversy on that. So the more we put on the front end, show the public and show the landowner and ourselves what what the probability of a final outcome will be, I think the better, we're in a better position as it, as it plays out. Sorry, that took a couple of different turns. Did I get to your question?
Well, you, you did and, and you went into some, some good depth. I, I wanted mainly for everybody to see what, what's planned for the area right now and how that kind of crosses over into what, what this is, what the potential is of this. And, uh, so that everybody has kind of visual idea of, of what, what is planned for now at this current time within a reasonable distance, you know, very actually short distance from, from this property.
And this was based on kind of that five minute walk idea as well. People get your general plan, you've got your quarter mile circles around different village nodes. So took the same practice.
Right. So I'm going to jump to the, the agreement. And I guess Jeff, maybe this is more for you. So from what I understand about Norton Commons, it's an ongoing managed, owned type, type, uh, development. Is that what you envisioned for this one as well?
Yeah, I, I, a couple of points I want to make. One is, you know, your, your general plan has this outlines what you want to see in the county. But when you look at what's actually happening, even with that general plan right now, it's not what is envisioned in that general plan. What it is, is a bunch of townhome development. Cramming in as much as you can because they're picking up 20 acre, 30 acre, 50 acre parcels. To actually pull off what's in the plan, you need a large piece of property. And so when you look at, you know, where, where are opportunities that this can actually come to fruition? There's very, very few. So that's one point I made. The second point is your question, which is this is not easy. This, this easy is buying a 20 acre parcel, you know, jacking up density, flipping it. That, that's an easy approach to development. This takes, I mean, Norton Commons, if we met him, David's been doing it, he's 85, he's been, he's been at it for 30 years. That's why Janine was so young because she's, you know, she'll ride it up in the summer. Creating place takes a long time. It's not, it's not as simple as just blowing through inventory. It's creating the streets that, that look and feel right at a human scale. And then it's, it's adapting to the market conditions, you know? It's, real estate's been a bit tough the last couple of years, right? So it's, it's kind of being able to adapt that way. But the intent is that, that we would own this for decades to come. And when you have that mindset, you do things differently. If you're in it for the long haul, you put more effort and time into the type of buildings that are going in and the type of infrastructure and the community space. Because all of that stuff combined creates value. And the value of this is really in the future. It's not, it's not today. And the other thing I would say, especially to the public that's here, I think it's overwhelming to look at that plan. This is going to, this, this is not going to happen overnight. This is going to take a long time to get there. And so, you know, you start small, you start very deliberately. And then as time goes, it builds and it creates more and more of a place as it goes on.
This is modeled after somewhere that one, Norton Commons. What's the timeline on that one? They started in the late eighties?
Uh, they kind of got approvals late, late nineties, started early 2000s.
And it's still, they're still building through that one.
It's actually really interesting when you drive into it. I'm not advocating for the developer or the development. I just appreciate something that I think is support is well done. You drive into it, you don't know that you're driving into a community that has 10 year old buildings. The buildings look clean, uh, but they don't look new. They look classic, classical in style. They've devoted a lot of effort into, um, one of our, our general planning commissioners likes to tease me a little bit for trying to create Disneyland by having a bunch of design statements. They, they don't, it's not fake, you know? My kid, when I first, I first took my kid to Disneyland, the very first thing that was said was this isn't real. It's like, no, I'm sorry if you thought it was real. When you get into a community like this, it's not well, um, it's real and it looks good.
I just wanted to clarify, so the, the common space will be, be owned, but everyone will be able to purchase the homes within, they'll own their own homes. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So it's the common space will be continually managed and owned by, by the group to.
Yeah, I think it'll be, I think it'll be a mix of, we met with the parks folks out there. I think some of it will be county owned or, you know, whoever. And, and then the areas, the small, because there's lots of small pocket parks, those will be owned and maintained by the, by the county.
Okay.
Yeah, in terms of which ones are turned over to the county and which ones. So I'm guessing all the main streets of the collectors and all that would be maintained by the county. And the alleyways, the private streets would be maintained by mutual aid.
One of the comments that we frequently, frequently get when we're looking at a general plan of that movement is, you just adopted it. Are you looking at it again? And the answer to that question is on page three of the general plan. The general plan is intended to be a written document, intended to change as circumstances change, as the market changes, as perceptions change, um, and as landowners change and their ideas change. It doesn't mean that everybody who has a tenant parcel could come and, or should come and, and ask for, uh, a change, even though we do see some that here or there, not all that gets approved for good reason. But when you get a big project, a big master plan project, it's a lot easier to take that into, um, consideration for the potential change because you're actually looking at a broader community area. I mean, this is a, the size potentially of a, of a, of a small city. And could probably function and build up as that. Uh, not to say it would be that, just.
Charlie, your current general plan, can you kind of speak to why this stayed in, you know, the, as we went through that, we kind of made some big changes in a lot of this, a lot of this area went to the, to the third acre type density across there. Why this particular property stayed in an agricultural zone?
Um, I don't know that I have all the details on it. Um, I just know that it was at one point included in the third acre idea. But after some conversations were had, I believe with landlords in the area, uh, the request was to keep it colored for agriculture. Just seemed like maybe there wasn't a desire at that point for development of activities to occur.
So it kind of goes back to your point you just made about when, when it changes, potential changes can be made.
And that's how you stay ahead of development. One of the things that, uh, this team did is they put together a market study. Put together a market study in a way that I haven't seen before. Typically, market studies are put together based off of what sales transactions have been happening over the last year, two years, five years. So you've got to see what the, um, comparable trends are, right? This, uh, team or the group that they hired to do the market study, they actually looked at demographics in Weber County. Spending habits or, or patterns in Weber County, housing habits, you know, what people are actually looking for and want. They were able to find that there's a good chunk of Weber County residents who would move to a community like this. And, you know, we've got a housing shortage still, um, despite what some of the numbers show. And we've got, um, the, the governor asking for, uh, communities to double down in single family detached. And, and when we're looking at that kind of stuff, we're, how do we create community, community if we just have acres and acres and acres of single family detached, uh, without the ability for those people who live in those neighborhoods to get easy and efficient access to the, the good services and the recreational opportunities for the community.
One of, one of the things that is mentioned with this type of development, traditional labor development, one of the questions is, well, what does this do for traffic on our roads? And the reality is obviously it increases any growth or increased traffic. But what this does is it contains the traffic within its own self. Because you don't have to drive everywhere to go to every place. You're able to walk, which people want to do, they want to walk to the store because it's short, it's a short distance. They want to walk to, to a restaurant. So they're not getting in their car every time they're going somewhere. They want to walk to school. I mean, if you go travel and visit these places, like the schools in the neighborhoods, kids are, I mean, everyone's walking. It's promoting a healthier lifestyle because they enjoy it. And obviously this isn't for everyone. You know, there's people in this county, they are going to want a big acre, you know, a good, a good piece of property with a large shop. And that's great too. I think we should allow that type of development. But, you know, what we're trying to propose is, is really around human beings and, and water.
Anybody else, I'd like Jeff to go back to the other, or the proposed amendments. Anybody else got anything on this before we switch back? Sorry, we're going to play a string. Frogging and jumping around.
That's not bad.
Go up to your now the this one. So as we talk on, you know, master planned communities or, or master planned areas, this one, has, has this one come up before? We look at the development there in the, on the bottom right corner there. And I'm not saying it's a bad development or anything along the lines with it. But as, as we look and, as what's come through and what we've seen is the planning commission, since the general plan's been done, I think the largest piece of property we've done, 40 acres? And we got.
We did, James, you see. Katie with, uh, maybe in the nose as well. Yeah, but those part 40 is.
But it, it still kind of follows that same process, you know? We're, we're getting something at the end of the day that looks, looks like this, you know? We've got some higher density and some townhomes. We've got some higher density and some townhomes and really no amenities, nothing outside of the homes. And, and so as I look at what's proposed here and the research that I've done, you know, I'm flying around Google Earth on Norton Commons and seeing the area and seeing the community and seeing what that's built, as I try and look at the two types of developments, and I'm not saying that everything in the western part of the county needs to be a five hundred acre master planned community, because as, you know, as was mentioned, there, there's needs from all sides. Larger lots, shops, be able to do some stuff, but, I mean, I think it was Commissioner Harvey, you brought up a good point in the work session a while back that, you know, you, you spoke to your son and this is what he wants. See, as the demographics and the people change, they're, they're not looking for a big yard to go home to. They're not wanting to go out and shovel snow. They don't, they want to come home from work or maybe work from home. They want to walk to these areas, I mean.
They want gig speed internet, lots of devices, and a place to go out in the back, a patio, a patio or a deck is enough. And with the property, I might off the deck. And another one just found another, another one, my son just found another property. I just like that, I just acted, oh, I don't understand.
I mean, it's, it goes back, it's not probably something that I would choose to want to be in. I, I like my space and I like having animals, but we all have difference of views and opinions and, and what we want to see in those areas. And, you know, I, I've got a strong concern as, as things grow. And granted, I've got a six year old and a ten year old, but in the future, you know, I see what prices have done and how things have changed. I couldn't afford, even with me and the wife working, to do the things that we do with the kids and, and go buy one of these houses. Like, it was interesting, I was driving back from a meeting in Logan today, and a three story townhouse all can, combined, sign on the side of the building says, starting at three hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. And, you know, I look at the area it's in, it's up right on highway eighty nine in Willard or Perry, I'm not sure which. There isn't nothing around it to support, you know? You're still gonna have to drive everywhere. And so when I, I've, I've flown around on Google Earth in Norton Commons, I see what's there. And I see how that community from, you know, and granted their videos as part of Norton Commons website, but I see the things that happen in these areas, and I think, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, you know? Maybe this is something that is appealing and, you know, possibly that, through that generational, and I know we've had this conversation a bunch and we've talked to, you know, we, we always go back to grain farms in West Haven. But, you know, I, I look at a project like this and I'm probably gonna get on that same soapbox you all have heard a lot, but that gives you that opportunity to be that starter family in a townhome. And as, as you grow out of that townhome, as your family grows, you don't have to move from your community and your neighbors. You build friendships, you build relationships in those areas. And I see this kind of being the same way. You go from your townhome, you can get into a single family home as your family grows. And as Commissioner Andrea, he's, you know, made comments too, I can stay in that same thing. And, and as the family grows and goes their own ways, hopefully they stay in the community. But then it gives you that senior or that smaller area that you can move into and, and you never leave that community. And, I don't know, I, I, I've really gotten to where I like that idea of, of development. Uh, my two cents.
I have no question, uh, maybe a little off from what, uh, Bren was talking about. Kids in these communities, will they save or less save than, say, just out where we live?
Well, so that's a, that's an interesting question. We were, um, we presented this to some members of the, to neighboring community members last week. And my wife made a comment that, you know, these places really promote free range kids. Um, and then everyone laughed because they're like, we are the free range kids, we, we run all over our farm. Um, so we, we looked out in the car and it's like, I'm such an idiot, why, why would I say free range kids to all these, the farm families? But, you know, when you look at, when you look at suburbia, when you look at wide roads and those neighborhoods, that's a scary place for kids if they're playing basketball and carping, ball runs out of the road. These, these type of places are for kids. It's for kids to go on their bikes and to disappear, because it's a safe place. The cars aren't screaming down the streets, there's places for them to go and explore. And the community cares to watch out for those kids. So yeah, to answer your question, there's no question that these places are safer for sure.
So maybe to build on that a little bit, go over to the school site. And when, when we met, when Mike kind of kicked this thing off last week, kind of go, maybe tell us a little bit more of how he explained how the schools and the way it's tied together and how all that kind of plays.
So one thing that they've done in the project was typically school districts have very strict guidelines for what they want from a school. And it's typically a very large area, you have your school, you have your open fields, and in some ways it's a waste of space. So what they did in this project is they combined a, a, a recreation center, um, place where adults go and exercise and, and hang out with the school, because they have similar amenities. There's a pool, um, there's a bath, there's a gym. And so instead of having a school that has all these things and a recreation center that has all those things, you combine them to lower the footprint, but, but also to create a better experience for the community. Parents can drop their kids out of school, go work out, they can work out, make their kids up through school. And then where they place this on the map, and again, this, this could change, this is an iterative plan. But the idea is that there's a trail system that the kids get right on and are able to walk to.
Commissioners?
Any chance?
It is a sweet thing to think about, being able to stay in the same community forever, if you can. And I think that there's some real value in that. I mean, I, I've lived in Warren all my life, had chances, the BCS in many different places, never did it. Uh, because I like being there, that's where my friends are, where the family kind of is. And speaking of family, I'd like to have my kids closer, but they can't afford to be closer. And so I think the community like this adds something for the family. If, if they have jobs and they can live in the same neighborhood, not next door. But I, I think.
Full time babysitter.
Then there's some real value in that. I mean, I think that it holds, if you hold families together, it's easy to hold communities together when they're all spread out. I think that if, it's all the time, it's, it's in competition with that tight neck community. So that's my take on that. I like it.
Commissioner McCormick?
Well, my thoughts are, uh, the only way to save the green, the open space out west is to have more density in one spot. Because if we have to spread it all out, then it's just gonna be a series of never, never land, fifteen thousand square foot of law. So I think a plant community like this is, suits our community well. And that's all I got.
And that one other comment, uh, to, today, e- even a third acre lots, that, that's a big improvement from one acre lots. So from a tax perspective of my mind, uh, a one acre lot probably doesn't pay for itself for what it gets. And I think that these kind of communities can actually help our schools, because there'll be more people paying property tax in there than maybe there is two or three of our communities southwest. So just from a standpoint of taxes, uh, and the way we're seeing our tax go up on schools, I think that this is an opportunity to really bake that joke to work. You know, if we're gonna spend good money on schools, we have more people sharing that load. I think it's something to consider. Same thing with infrastructures, instead of it spreading all over the county. I mean, that's a large development, but it's only a few feet to the next block. And all that should be some kind of a scale of economy.
You know, right along the lines of what you're saying, when we did the general plan, we, uh, we just did some quick math between what is it taxpayers are paying for road improvements, uh, road maintenance and improvements, uh, in the uncorporated area versus what is it that they're actually paying per lot? And we found that, uh, the average one acre lot was being, had their, uh, road maintenance and their, their street plowed, uh, to the tune of, you know, being socialized five hundred dollars a year. In other words, the taxes should be five hundred dollars a year higher to actually plow and maintain the road that's in front of it. Now, obviously, there's less, uh, the, it's the roads funds that help fund all that, but that's still taxpayer dollars that somebody else is helping pay for. Where are you right, um, if you, you have a few more on the block, then it, it definitely has to pay for itself.
Or if the county does a few more.
Does a pilot?
Yeah.
You know, we could, uh.
So we're not.
We could skip a few nights. Depends on who you ask, there are a few, a few people who will say the county never does plant their road.
I think they take some hits off.
Commissioner Ferreira, what do you think?
This is where it's at. This is, this is long term, this is hundred years in the future. You're, you're looking at probably fifteen years to develop this out, I would imagine, somewhere in that neighborhood, ten to fifteen. I know you're hoping for something better.
I, I, I hope you want it.
But, but if you, but if you take into consideration the ups and downs of the markets, you're gonna be there for a while. I like the fact that developers are gonna be vested in this development. It's not going to be that they're putting up these, putting in the infrastructure and allowing other builders to come in and build, and they're out. I, I really like the, that aspect of it. I like the fact that they're, they're part of it and, and they'll be part of it because they're, again, they're vested in it. So that's a big deal to me. I think that that's really important in, in today's economy. You know, we've seen a lot of these subdivisions start and fail numerous times. I mean, I can, I can think of several right now, and, and the one I'm thinking that most of is Taylor Land. Since I've been on the planning commission, that's went through at least four times, four different developers. And so in order to mitigate those kind of problems, um, I like the fact that developer, that, that developer wants to be involved through this whole process, all the way to the end and maybe even beyond that. So that, that's a good deal to me. I like the concept, I like the way it lays out, I think it does fit the community in that area. Um, it's surprising to me about where this is going, this whole thing. I would have never thought about this, you know, a year or two ago, in this particular, on this particular property. But it is what it is, the owner has their rights as owning the property and, and, uh, you know, if this is, this is what they've determined works for them, then, uh, I'm, I'm good with that part of it and, uh, and I, I like it.
One other comment, uh, Mr. Chair, over here to the west, you see those yellow buildings? Can you move that over a little bit?
Zoom us out a little.
Yeah, there you go. You know, uh, if, if, if this happens, uh, you're gonna take an awful lot of, and the people that settle in this community, you're gonna take a lot of car trips off the road or significantly shorter. And the people that work at these buildings right here has got to live somewhere. And I think that this development, and I'm not sure what the timeline is on either place, but it, to, to me, it has a potential to, for people maybe even to walk up to work through the bridge over the river.
I'd ask them to install at least fifty in that one little stretch right there.
I can't, I can't go over there anymore, but I can see that. No, I, you, you know, where, where it is in our county, I think that there's a lot of exciting things can go on there. And the good thing is we have the space to accommodate both things, which I think is a pretty special thing for us. Okay, I'll be quiet, I'm gonna make one comment.
My wife made me promise.
We appreciate it.
I like the fact that we're building a community where people can stay as well. I think that's important, I think that's really important. The older I get, the more important I think that is. I don't necessarily want to move out of my community, so I think that's an important thing.
Commissioner Thrower?
Yeah, so I've had the opportunity to actually be in Norton Commons. So some of what's talked about, you know, you always want to do a reality check or fact check. I was on those streets, the kids were driving down the streets with their golf carts, bikes, uh, having it rear loaded with the garbage trucks, everything else, just made it a sense that that's a great, you know, a great place to be. You'd walk down the street, there'd be a little cafe there. Um, so, you know, change is always hard, but we have to deal with reality, which is growth. When Jed and I grew up in the real estate industry sixty years ago, I hate to put a number on it, it was all out west, it was either acre lots or more. Well, we don't have that luxury, even if we wanted to, because we, we have to deal with growth. We have to look at our kids and grandkids, what they want. And I think Commissioner Harvey, the kids and grandkids don't necessarily want an acre, they want a half, a half acre. They want a place they can park their toys, their bikes, and then have somewhere where they can walk to either work or dinner, shop, or both, or all. So again, I, the proof's in the pudding. Um, and, you know, from a planning perspective, you know, we continue to see, this is kind of where I come from. Uh, somebody, the developer comes in and wants to do a cookie cutter track, what I call the track homes, which we've seen a lot, we need those. But we can either do that and do, lose our, lose our ground out there, twenty, thirty, forty acres at a time and have the same product basically reproduced, which we know what they put on that is to get density. Or we can look for something that's a little bit more futuristic. Okay, where do people really want to live? What can we give to our kids and grandkids that takes them off the road, gives them the ability to work and play at a spot that's not that an impact of the people? So, uh, from what I saw at Norton Commons, uh, it works. Now, whether it works here or not, that's up to you folks to decide. But, you know, I can also say, one thing we're facing in the county is an infrastructure issue. You talk to the governor, he'll tell you, good infrastructure makes good development. We have to look at what the cost of infrastructure and the develop, and where are we gonna put that infrastructure for future to encourage developments like this to happen? So, but I don't think we continue to run infrastructure on every twenty or thirty or forty acre park, parcel that comes along for the same product. I think we have to be a little smarter than that. So, again, that's your decision. I've seen it, uh, I'm, I'm not saying that, uh, all the details have worked out yet, but I think you'd be, we'd be amiss if we didn't give this an opportunity to at least go through our due diligence and, and have that discussion. So, but I trust you guys to make good decisions.
Commissioner Nigga?
Well, completely honest, for me, this is not where I personally want to live. This, I want what I have, I have three acres, I want a little bit of space, because then my neighbors aren't hearing me curse the goats when they're getting out. And I have the junk car that everybody hates, you know, I'm, I'm that kind of person. Um, but I know that, like, what Commissioner McCormick said, I'm looking at surrounding communities and how they've developed. And if you go and talk to the ones that were farming it before, they've developed these little pieces here and there. And then those farmers, you're like, well, I can't really get a tractor down the road anymore. And so then that little piece that they have left of their farmland has now become development. It's all fills in with those cookie cutter homes, if we want to call them that, right? And just because it's not what I want to live in, at least right now, I mean, life changes. I might end up wanting to be there where everything's self-contained and close, right? Doesn't mean that that's not what other people are wanting. I like the idea of planning as a master plan, a community that way, just from seeing what I've seen so far in the two years I've been on this board um, or this committee with just the maje posh kind of, you know, everywhere, just kind of spread out. Not having anything master planned, it is a little bit, it, it's not working, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. It's not working, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So it's just because I don't like it as far as where I want to personally live, doesn't mean I don't think it's nice, I look at the images that we've seen, I've looked, I've done a little bit of research myself with the Norton Commons and the fill that it has um is good, the field trip we had down to Utah County was a huge eye opener for me, because I was totally against all that stuff, I'm still against high rise apartments and that kind of high density stuff. But I I I brought this up numerous times, um the conversation that I've had with Commissioner Ferro when we were down on that field trip and the sense of community when you're walking to get a product, right, ice cream or gelato that Charlie likes or whatever it may be, you you run into your neighbors and you have that conversation. Right now, I don't have that as much as when I lived in Roy, I had that, we'd talk, we'd you'd go for a walk through your neighborhood. Now, having that spread out area, I I don't have that as much and that's something that I missed, I didn't realize I would, but I do like that that sense of community, I think is the the main part, the main thing. So I guess that's my five cents.
Appreciate it. My question thoughts?
Well, I'm a little bit with Casey, I like my space too. But I do think that if this is done with thoughtfulness, it can be very beneficial to our community by all means. Um kids can still ride their golf carts and bicycles and walk, even if it's not tight like this, but I think if you do it correctly, I think it'll be good for our community.
I forgot, uh you mentioned that you want to not have three hundred feet along the river? And you you on everywhere, right, like you some three hundred, some one hundred, I think it should be at least six hundred, maybe six fifty along the whole thing. Because then I can still duck that and be legal away from all your ghosts. So if you can accommodate that.
You're gonna have to be in the river though.
Yeah, I still would be, that's how I do it now. Sorry, sir.
No, I just did out everyone's comments, I I like master plan communities, I appreciate it, I I like the vision, I wish we could do all development this way personally, um yeah, I I think it um creates beautiful products that um and I yeah, just I could repeat it what everyone said, but I I've lived in communities similar to this, I I like it, I live in a bigger property now that I'm not sure I like as much, so. I I I like this idea.
Pressure Harvey?
I don't, I don't want to be like everybody else. Just because somebody else is doing it. But I I I do think we need to plan for the future. And when I say don't want to be like everybody else, because I've just sat and watched and learned over the last many years and learned from some of you around this table who've been on this commission for a while. It's hard, they take these tracks of properties and they, there's no there's no connectivity between them, and then all we have to do is go to the county and south, see them. Trying to find an address, and then you gotta come out to a maid and then go over, it just go right there, I don't want so I think having something like this, she'll go, I've got a couple of questions, and I've got one more comment, boy, I want to make that field that's um keep moving the mouse down. Uh just move her down, I can see right there. I don't know whose property that is, and then it's not important, but I just want to make sure that there's, I see the connectivity from the north and from the south, uh maybe there is something to the east or west right in there, but just so that there's a full connectivity, because if this were to go, that would be, I mean, you maybe that'd be something. The other thing for me though that's most important is uh and the school district tells us this, the stronger schools are those who the kids are coming from homes that are uh home ownership. Uh I'm not gonna talk about affordability, because they're all the homeownership, so I'd like to see something and from this group deed restricted with regards to home ownership, so investors couldn't come in and buy up the blocks and then create a big rental pool for everything. You've got to have people who actually own the spots.
Well, yeah, I said to respond to that, so the market study, it's an amazing market study that talks about the type of people that this would attract and says this percentage is homeowners for sale, this this section is for rent, we need both of them to create a vibrant community, but um what you what you want in these places is stability. You don't want like, you know, a hundred percent you you destroy community by that. Home ownership creates community, it puts its roots. And that is definitely something that is of interest.
Those are my comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, pressure pressure ball.
Thank you, um this is really for the planning commission, because the commissioners and the planning department and the developers are curious for me. I'm a big fan of master plan communities, I think it's great. What I hate is to see those notches that we see in there, and I get that the that the developer doesn't own those properties. But for me to entertain a general plan amendment, it has to include natural boundaries, the river, forty seven hundred, Paul Street.
Actual boundaries.
Gets down, that, that's what I would entertain. Because even it's even it's not part of the proposed plan right now, we're telling the community, this is what we envision in this area. Not, no, this is the piece, and then the the neighborhoods y'all were talking about earlier, then you go back to one of the notches and then you just have those neighborhoods intermix with this master plan. That's right, but I but I I love the concept, I think it's very beneficial, I was I was part of Green Farm, it sounds like you guys are familiar with that, it was it was thoughtful, it was really thoughtful, and we we put a lot of work into that with the developer to make it kind of community where you could live your life, you know, that's what it was all about, we didn't do that.
It's we we, it's funny, we go back to Green Farm quite a bit when we when we talk through these or we look through these in in our meetings and I was one of them, Green Farms in my backyard, basically. And my my father or my in-laws rented that property and farmed that part property for fifty plus years from the greens and, you know, when I started building, it's like, man, this sucks, I don't want all these townhomes and all this stuff in my backyard. But then once you go into the community and and spend some time in there, it's changed my opinion of it, you know, change is coming. We, I think we all understand and get that and and it kind of goes back to that same thing, that master plan and, you know, that that whole area. I don't know how big that whole project was, we haven't got into the details of that, but so yeah, that's that's kind of why we hit on Green Farm a lot, it it it's neat. And I think, you know, to to your comments on on that whole area, I mean, I I agree, that's why we planned that. I know it put a lot on you guys to put colors on the map for us that you envision this whole area, but I I think it helps other landowners when they choose to do it, they want with their property, it might not be Black Pine that's gonna get it, but it kind of shows them how to to carry out the the area and the community that's already been started.
Well, see, I think it's the only way to present it to the public, because because it makes sense, that map makes sense, you scroll up to the screen above that, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't look right. When you go back to the community and say, we know that we know that we approved this this general plan map three years ago, whatever it was now. Have a different idea, this looks like a different idea. The other side looks like, oh, there's a landowner who wants to do this, and not everybody's on board. And and they don't have to do it today or tomorrow or in the next five years, but when they do, it will look like this, that's what's important to me. And 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 Green Farm, we had a hundred acres, that was the biggest piece we'd ever approved. And so we had enough to do that on a smaller scale, but you know, it it's it's just gets rid of the piecemeal.
How many acres is?
Same as five hundred.
Pressure Harvey?
You know, I will just go back, it it actually changed me. When I was like you, Brad, when I saw that even when I went out to that Green Farm the first time, I thought, oh, man, what are they doing up here? And then uh we recently went to the folks, they built a community center, they're just a small little place where you can have an reception or if you have Thanksgiving or something there. And the people who came up to me was my pharmacist when we were first married, a school teacher when I was a daughter, the neighbor that was an electrician. And many others, there were like two dozen people, I knew out there from out south where I grew up. And every one of them, and I've been working in the construction industry for thirty six years now. Because of I, so I know, I've I've heard the stories about people, once they're done with their house, their relationship with their builders are not always really good. But every one, every single one of those people came up to me and said how much they loved it, how much they loved the whole overall experience. They took the decisions away from them and just said, you know, you, this is what you're gonna get for this kind of part for a product. Every one of them were really, really happy, and these are people that helped shape my life. I had to make a distinct change right there, because I thought, you know, that's, it may be not what I want. But they're really happy out there and they're they're getting more than twilight of their life. I was really happy for them, that was a great, it was a great learning experience. Thank you.
Director Oliver?
You know, I think about early in my career, um I was up in that Snyderville Basin area. And the community really wanted to preserve open space in that area. And I look back today and I'm really grateful that they did that. And they planned some master plan communities around that, because it really created an element of walkability and connectivity to now some of the commercial areas up in that area. And now that I look back on it, you know, about thirty years later, you know, it's it's neat to see um those developments taking place and and as I look at this and the ability to create connectivity, especially along the river corridor area, I I'm excited about that. Um the Emerald Necklace, you guys all know I've been a big fan of that. Um you know, you go to Boston and you have Fenway Park and so many different element parks along that Emerald Necklace that many communities have tried to emulate and recreate. And there's a reason why they've been doing that, it's because it's a successful walkable area. And um you know, you look at Ogden City, you know, they tried to create the Emerald Necklace along the River Parkway. And it happens throughout so many communities, and there's a reason for that, it's because that connectivity and that pedestrian experience is is so important. And when we started, you know, create walkable communities, that's when we really created communities that are gonna be lasting. Uh the communities that are vehicle oriented, they'll 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 last, but they're not ones that are sustainable. But it's going in a good direction, I do appreciate Jeff, where you listen to the commissioners and picking up those notches and I know that, you know, the community may not be super excited to have some of those, but um I I think down the road, when we look at it long term, it's gonna have the ability for them to have connectivity and be a part of this. I know that that was something you were super excited about, but we do appreciate it.
Liam?
Thanks, Brad.
Just making sure.
Oh, yeah, make sure the attorney's happy. Sean, you got anything you want to weigh in on?
Sure, I'll weigh in. As we're looking at a general plan amendment, I think we need to take into consideration what this does for the community. What are the community's needs, are we looking at recreation, are we looking at transportation and connection with roads? Are we looking at what this does for the schools, how this uh how this complements the existing neighborhood? And as we look to the future, I mean, it's matter of time before this either incorporates or is annexed into the city, this is not going to remain unincorporated forever. Where is that town center going to be? What is going to be the focal point of Western Weaver County in the future? And it's probably going to be something that looks like this, that has a main street, has commercial, residential, other types of uses. Uh so overall, I I think this is a good direction to go, I think this is something that we should really consider. And as long as it complements and benefits the community, then I I don't I don't see an issue with it, yeah. I like this type of development, uh I think master planning this and taking into account all of those things tends to be better than what we've been talking about with the twenty or thirty acre pieces where we just get some residential and a little pocket park over here and how does that work over here and do they actually connect? We we can actually see what's going to happen here, so I think there are some benefits.
Appreciate it. Jeff or Janina, you got anything else to add?
No, I we're just really grateful for your time. We've tried to get a lot of input and we continue to want input. And again, I think our interests are aligned in that we want to create community. And we feel like there's a blueprint to do that, we've seen it in action, we know it works. And you know, I think, I guess, in terms of next steps, I don't know, Charlie, you can talk through that from for the public to know kind of where to go from here, but this workshop's actually been very helpful for us, so thank you.
Still my thunder, I was gonna say, Kate, Charlie, bad ass phone. And we know we can do it. But remember, six o'clock, we're done.
The one thing I do want to say, I I'd love to talk to the public after this meeting's over, um they came here, we love you, I thought, so. I don't know if we can do that here or.
Once we close the work session, any work session we generate, I'll take public comments out, but we can have all the dialogue we want after. Public hearings, I know it was supposed to be tonight, it got pushed again, November?
Yeah, yeah, so we're talking November unless we have a special meeting, but I think right now, just even at this point, we're getting into holiday season next month, so we just have to watch the calendar, but I mean, this is by no means gonna be a work you split fast thing. It's good to take your time, it'll be great.
Sure, now might be a good time for you to give your speech on how we appreciate the community and we want to hear from about that public hearing. Because I mean, honestly, I don't think none of, we we've said a lot of positive things, but I don't feel like, just knowing all of you is a is a this planning commission, we're not sold on anything until we hear what they have to say about public hearing, so.
Very much so, that's that's why the process is, as it goes through and I mean, there is is this moves, if it, you know, continues to move through the process, there's going to be a lot of that opportunity. General plan amendment, rezone and subdivision as it as it moves through through the boxes and, you know, too often do we get to a point that, you know, they we we sit in there and do make decisions and we don't have the public there with us. And you know, it it puts a lot on on the shoulders of the planning commission, because we don't get that input and one good thing that that we do see is we get further west in the county, just like every time there's an item on the agenda out, Warren, West Warren Rees, they fill the seats and and you know, right now, as we move through the process on these items, as this, it it kind of gives us an open book to ask and and negotiate through the through the process, it does, it's not like a typical subdivision where we have to look at it and say, does this meet what the ordinance state and are they checking all the boxes and and that's where sometimes when the public comes in, it feels like it goes on deaf ears, because we have an obligation to follow what the ordinance says, but looking at rezones and general plan amendments, we we have a little bit more flexibility there, so. The the more input that can come to this in in those public hearing settings is is where, you know, that that kind of helps guide the direction and and where this is going, and it's not only direction for us, but I I think even the applicants, developers, I mean, I I think they hear that too. They're not in here because they want to make everybody in the community mad. You know, they they want to build a good product. And you know, we picked on the little cookie cutter stuff here a little bit tonight and and it's not that we're saying that's not a good way to develop, but you know, when when we can look at a whole area, I think that kind of changes that a little bit, so.
I agree, I wouldn't have had a first tone if it wasn't for the cookie cutter, so.
So yeah, keep an eye on the notices, they'll be coming. Public hearing probably tended to Public hearing probably tentatively in November. I can't remember what day our meeting is. And November twelfth, so. Please come. Don't be afraid. I'm, I'm personally. Uh, grateful that we had this work session tonight before the public hearing. Because it brought a lot of information that we didn't have before. And then going right into the public hearing, it was a little too, too quick. It was a little too soon. This, this gives the, the, uh. The community a chance to come in and see what it is, gives us a chance to absorb what it is and go forward. So I'm, I'm grateful to, uh. Staff and, and to the applicants for, for pushing that back.
So, and to that point, you know, I think referred from a couple of people, you know, it's on a planning, it's on a public hearing, it's on, it's on, you know, what. What are you trying to pull? I, I think for us, we are, we're not, we're not trying to rush this. Obviously, um. We'd like to see it go through, but we'll take as long as it takes for people to comfortable at least.
Yeah, please come. I'm going to just say one other thing. It doesn't help guide us in the direction we need to go. It is the direction. We, we've listened to you, so that we know what direction to go. And as long as it's within the legal terms, that's what we do. I, being on it for two years now, I know that everybody on here, sometimes, like Brent said, people will come to the, the meetings and they. They, they don't get what they want, right? It doesn't, the result isn't what they want, but it's legally what we have to do, like the landowner or developer, no matter who it is, has rights as well. But we want to be guided by you, especially like Brent said, on something like a general plan amendment. So we are here to represent you. That's who we want to listen to. So please come, don't be afraid to speak up. I know it's a little intimidating going on the microphone when you got Brent staring right at you. But do it anyways and let us know what you think.
Okay, Charlie, what do you got to finish up?
I just wanted to recap on a, on a few things, especially general plan related. Um, this isn't an overhaul of the general plan by any means. In fact, the developers not proposing to change the text in general plan. And the text is where the, um, meat and potatoes are. Um, the, the map kind of says general locations of where things should go, but the text is the explanation of what the county should be expecting. Um, this is the vision. Uh, it's the overall vision, uh, for community character. All other aspects of the general plan should be vetted through the filter of this vision. And it says, while the pressure to grow and develop will persist, there's a clear desire for growth to be carefully and deliberately designed. And a manner that preserves, complements, and honors the agrarian roots of the community. To do this, we becoming will promote and encourage a community's character through public space and street design standards. Open space preservation and diversity of lot sizes and property uses that address the need for places for living, working, and playing in that growing community. One of the things I, I rewrote and rewrote this paragraph when we did the general plan several different times to make sure I got it right. And one of the first things I wanted to write, that, that first sentence to the comma, while pressure to grow and develop will persist, uh, it. Part, part of that. Uh, initially was written to say something like. We know what's going to happen. If we don't want that, we don't like it happening. Uh, we would like to keep a lot of our area open and, and farm oriented. Um, but. We know that a lot of these farms are selling. Uh, for whatever reason, the market is, is tipping. Um, and if, if it's going to continue to tip, we have a choice. We can become Syracuse. Or we could do like a lot of members of the public asked us to do and don't become Syracuse. And Syracuse has some nice locations. I don't want to pick on that. It's just a nice, easy target. Um, of the, they just have a ton of those track home neighborhoods. Uh, that just doesn't work for that last sentence there, that, uh, a need for places for living, working, and playing. Um, I was asked by one member of the public who is in rock city to this project. Um, you know, what the deal is, what is the county for growth? Are we pro-growth? Uh, I said, I don't know if I can answer that question for the county commissioners, but, uh, that's not what I think we're here to do. I think we're here to acknowledge that the market is pushing hard. And when markets push hard, politics change, policies change, uh, a, a lot of the fortitude to push back against the market shifts. I'm not going to say it weighs, but it, it does shift. And if we aren't on the front end of that market pressure. We're just going to get what every developer wants, which is get in, cash out. Uh, and then change your LLC and start a new one. You got to change your LLC so you don't lose your Lexus if somebody sues you, right? And that's, that's just. It doesn't work very well for the creation of community. It works great for the creation of some homes. Some houses, so. Like, I like what you guys are saying. Uh, we're the things I want to make sure that we're very clear when we dialogue with the public on this is. I don't want to tell you guys what your opinion is, but we're not necessarily saying we're pro-growth. When we were going through the general plan process, I remember a lot of comment, there were several comments that said. Uh, things like, you mean to tell me that you are going to put a bunch of houses in the farm behind my house? And the answer is, well, I'm, I'm not, you're not. The county commissioners are, I don't think, you know, none of us have that, those kind of tools yet. Developers will. And, and if we don't figure out how to work with those developers in a way that shapes their community to the benefit of the future. It's just going to be out for hundreds, uh, in ways that it already has in other communities.
You got to go one step back from that too, Charlie. You got to go back to the owner that has rights on that property. And at some point in time, I mean, from that point on, I agree, you know, what you said is a hundred percent, but, but there's one more step to that process. And, and those people have rights and they need to be, those rights need to be recognized. You know, I mean, we're one of the last farm families out in that community. And like I said before, this, this particular property, it surprises me that, that we're at this point right here where we're at with that property. That, that property owner has that right. And, and that's where, you know, the faces at the end of the table come into play. So there's, there's that, there's that part of it as well, you know, at some point in time, families. Have determined that they can't do what they've been doing anymore. Or through attrition, through, through generational attrition, it's no longer even practical for them to continue doing it. And then you start fighting the growth on top of that and trying to get equipment up and down the road and you're trying to. You know, everybody wants the open space. They love you as a farmer, as long as they're not behind you in their car. I only flipped you off one time, man. And I think you got twice back, right? So anyway, sorry.
No, that's great. That's a really good explanation on all that. I think I, I heard at a recent meeting, uh, somebody say, uh, why aren't we keeping the farms? Why aren't we staying in farming? Um, and the question I've got to ask, uh, the people who left that question back is who, who are we? Who are we forcing to stay in farming? Uh, it was marketable people who choose to stay. And I hope a lot of people do continue to choose to stay in it, but those who don't. We need to figure out what we're going to do, uh. When they come in, or when they're selling the property, when we're a developer. You can see their team proposed the one that's on the right on the screen. Um, the one on the left is the one that's already adopted. Uh, you can see some of the changes, uh, between the two. This is where I think a lot of our conversation is going to boil down, um, in our discussion in the hearing is whether or not some of. Obviously, whether or not what the developer is proposing for the project that they control is right, but whether or not some of these other shades on somebody else's property is right. It's a really hard pill to swallow for a property owner. Uh, to look at a color on the map and say, what the hell are you proposing on my property? Um, it's hard. And it, it's also hard if you don't understand the fully developed process. To contemplate that this isn't the county enforcing streets, it's not the county enforcing uses. Um, it, this is creating opportunity for that landowner to, um, evolve in their uses in the future when they choose to do so. There was a landowner, I'm not going to point to which one, but I did have a conversation with the landowner recently, um, that is inside of this colored area. Um, that, that said, um, I want you to, what do I have to do to get you to zone my property at the C1 zone? I said, well, here's the process. Um, I don't know if that matches the general plan for that location, but let's talk a little bit about white market and, and what people will be helping with. And his reasoning was, I want developers to stop asking to buy my property. And so I wanted to see one zone because I know that a grocery store is not going to be needed here for another ten years. That's one way of doing it. Um, that said, what opportunities are being created? What value is being added for these landowners that are outside of this project? Um, that will allow them, not make them, not force them, but allow them to shift gears when they're ready to shift gears. Um, and not until they're ready to shift gears. So you can see some of the blue lines, uh, blue lines on the map here. Uh, we got white lines on our map, but. They're, they're supposed to represent the same, um, type of, uh, street, the collector's street type. Uh, we get down along 12th Street, a lot of the orange commercial, you get that mixed use, uh, blob over there on each side of forty-seven hundred and. Uh, along nine hundred south, which, up here, the, uh, that's just. So nine hundred is right here with opportunities for mixed use, commercial and mixed residential. Um, one of the things that you saw from the sketches that they showed us is nine hundred would come through at some point. And then curve up and connect into that community here, which I thought was a really nice, uh. Transition that created the least amount of impact on other landowners that are over here, but also provides really good opportunities for, um, them nonetheless. But we're looking at this map over here. Uh, one of the things that you see, we've got orange crosshatch with yellow underneath. Uh, that yellow being this yellow way over here. The orange crosshatch is intended to represent the mixed residential and it's intended to say. Um, it's kind of a flex area. Uh, intended to say that whether it's a, a mixed residential or single family residential, they want to be able to have opportunity for both in here. And we can create a development agreement that says how things should go and how they lay out and stuff like that. Um, but what I really liked, if we can get this project to function like that Northern Commons development. What I really liked is the developer has full motivated self-interest to make sure that their uses, um, are, are harmonious with each other. Cause they're going to sell the property right next door to whatever this one is, right? And so they've got the market potion for them to do some, something that works really well. Um, then from the county's perspective, it doesn't have to be us that does that. Uh, it'd be really nice to have a development agreement that says developer, your CCNRs or your, uh, uh, operation. Composition is going to be X, Y, and Z. And if you violate that, then you're a violation of your development agreement. Rather than saying your setbacks are going to be this, your single family is going to be right here, your multifamily is going to be right there. Um, but when it comes to those edge areas, we want to just, that's where I think we should focus. Um, in those edge areas, how is that going to affect, uh, the neighbors who aren't quite ready for, uh, their property to be changed or, or developed or impacted by. Developments happening next door. Um, as you think about this, and we'll get this out, um, into your hands, shoot it out by email so you can see this before your next. Meeting and then for the hearing, I'll make sure I got a staff report put together for you, but I'm going to ask you a few questions about these changes here. Uh, mixed commercial here, vehicle oriented commercial here. Looks like we've got to make sure residential, uh, mixed residential and single family residential potential here. You can see how that's different along this, this line up here. Um, going all the way to, up to here. Um, is it the right thing to do? Is it not the right thing to do? You know, I'll ask you guys that, that kind of stuff in your next meeting and. Um, what kind of colors would you like to see changed? In fact, once you get this in your email, if you want to send me your comments, I can, I can start making those changes in, in the, the staff proposal or the staff recommendation. Um, before we get to that hearing. So you'll see what they're proposing and then any kind of tweaks that I might want to make to it from a staff proposal, we'll get those both in front of you. Uh, you guys tell us whether or not we got it right. Any questions? Okay, as far as the full process goes, um, this will go to a public hearing. Uh, I've given the option to, um, the applicant on whether or not they want to have this development. Or, or excuse me, have the general plan amendment go through the hearings, but then not get passed until the rezone gets passed. Cause I, they know and they're hearing from you guys that you guys don't want to see this general plan amendment go through unless it's going to result in this development. Um, which I think is a good idea. Uh, so I given the opportunity or the choice to go that way, or we can do a resolution. If the planning commission likes it, wants to, uh, for deposit recommendation, the county commissioners, commissioners can, if they like it, they want to adopt it, adopt the resolution that says. This change will happen, but it won't go into effect until the rezone. Goes into effect and until the development agreement goes into effect. And so we can tie those all together. Um, we'll see. My guess is if you guys see this in, in your public hearing and you make a recommendation on this at your next meeting, I think the commissioners will see it. Uh, within, uh, three or four weeks after that. So I think they'll probably see it in December, uh, before the holidays, I would guess. Um, whether or not to make a final decision in December is going to be up to them, but, uh, after that's done, you guys will start to see the rezon proposal and the development agreement. And we'll bring that together in, in pieces, so it's not all one thing to swallow at the same time. Go on through it. Uh, any questions for me?
Mr.? Thanks, Charlie. Well, Sam, we got anything else?
Well, you really appreciate your time and coming and joining us in our meeting and, and going through this. It, you know, this is a big change for the area and it's good to have all of us sitting on the table and, and. Hearing, hearing the thoughts, so. With that, if there's nothing else. Let's move on.
Thanks.
I think fellow eyes can see it. It's worse than the radio tonight. I promise I never gave you the. Did I say something that made it sound off? That's the giving it a break.